Okay, it is six o'clock and we are going to begin our regular meeting of the Lomita Planning Commission. This Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. And I'd like to call the meeting to order at six P M. So let's start off with our flag salute. My assistant and vice chair Michael Graff, would you please lead us in the flag to.
Yes, thank you.
Everyone place your hand in your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Commissioner Dever.
Here.
Commissioner Santos.
Here.
Commissioner Steinbach. Commissioner Steinbach, please unmute yourself. Okay, we'll come back to Commissioner Steinbach. Commissioner Stevens. Commissioner Thompson. Okay, we're noting the absence of Commissioner Thompson this evening. Vice Chair Graff.
Commissioner Steinbach, Commissioner Thompson's here.
Commissioner Thompson's here?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. And so Commissioner Steinbach's obviously here too. So Vice Chair Graff is here and Chair Camerata.
Here.
All right, terrific. The gang's all here.
All right, great, thank you. Check in, yes, okay, good. All right, oral communications, item two, persons wishing to address the planning commission. On subjects other than those scheduled to request that it do so at this time, please provide your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, five-minute time limit per person has been established. For government code five-four-nine-five-four-point-two. And it also prohibits the planning commission from discussing or taking any action on an item that is not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, do you have any or have you received any comments or any cards for any items not on tonight's agenda?
I have not.
Okay, and is there anyone wishing to comment on anything that's not on the agenda this evening?
I will, Steve, I'll just do it.
Okay, why would that with, welcome our city manager, Ryan Swoot. Go ahead, Ryan.
Thanks. A couple of things this evening. First and foremost, I want to introduce you. As you know, we've been looking for someone to lead our community and economic development team for some time. I am quite happy to say I think we have found the perfect person for that role. This is Brianna Ringe, and she is our new community and economic development director for that department. Obviously, this being her first day with us. She's kind of drinking through a fire hose today, so we have still have Sheri here to assist with your meeting this evening, and Brianna's here to listen in and get up to speed. She's already enough speed pretty quickly. Brianna comes to us from the city of Palos Verdes Estates where she was the community development director up there. Prior to that, she actually worked for a couple of cities in the state of Georgia. She has a bachelor's degree in architecture and a master's degree in regional planning. So she, we're very excited to have her on our team here. I think she's going to slot into the team that is team media quite well. And I think you all will enjoy having her leadership going forward. As you know, you all have some pretty hefty conversations coming up with regard to general plan updates, specific plans, zoning questions. Lots of pretty many things coming over the next couple of years. To have someone with this kind of experience coming in to lead that process, I think it's going to be very handy to have. So we're excited. Entirely unrelated note, obviously, we're sitting upstairs because our council chambers is in the, is a construction zone at the moment. As Mike was just asking me about the countertops and when they were going in. The council chambers is getting upgraded, as you know. I'm happy to say that that is moving along quickly now. We had some hangups with some supplies for the countertops and things, but it is moving along. The reason I bring it up is because at some point when that project is finished in the next few months or couple of months. Obviously, the council meetings and your meetings will be back into the council chambers. I think you'll find it rather handy as well. You'll have individual monitors. There'll be large monitors for the public to view presentations. We'll have a whole audiovisual system that is upgraded with multiple cameras now, so we can actually broadcast meetings out both via the web and frankly via T E as well. Right here from City Hall. So lots of upgrades going in. The important part of that, though, is it sort of coincides with some of the changes from the state level. As you know, we are currently allowed to do hybrid meetings and virtual meetings under some of the temporary changes to the Brown Act under eighty-three sixty-one. With the state of emergency at the state level coming to an end in February. Some of the previous, well frankly, all of the previous provisions of the Brown Act get reinstated, which require, have certain requirements for public meetings being in person. Having said that, this last year, the state legislature passed the bill that makes some very, very limited exceptions to allow for remote participation of legislative bodies under very certain circumstances. So our goal as the city currently, as we're looking forward to council chambers coming online and with these new laws coming into effect, is to have our legislative bodies be meeting in person. And the, the individuals on those bodies be here in person, but still as much as possible allowing the public to participate virtually if they so choose to do that. There are certain requirements we'll have to meet in doing that, but we see no reason to not have that option if it's available to us. So if it gives people one more way to participate in our local government, then we're all about that. So that's kind of our intent at this point. We'll have to work through some of those keys as we go forward into the new law. But you should know that coming forward into those next few months, early next year. January, February, March, at some point, we're going to have to be back in person for your meetings and for the council meetings with very few limited exceptions. And we'll go into those. I think that is all I have for you.
Well, thank you, Ryan, for that. And let's say welcome to Brianna. And I'm sure everybody else will say welcome as well.
Yeah.
Good to have you on our team. Look forward to having you do everything that Sheri does and. All right, all right.
If I may, if I may, Chair Camerata, I just wanted to mention that our assistant district attorney Natalie Camarena is joining us via Zoom this evening.
Okay, right, and I noted that. And welcome, Natalie. Thanks for joining.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Okay, so with that, we're going to go to item three, which is a consent agenda. However, we do not have any minutes, as I understand it, so we're going to pass that.
That's correct.
Go to item, public hearings, which is item number four, and is the applicant on still Zoom? We're looking for Mr. Kim. Is he on there? I see him. Mr. Kim, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. So I'll read a few paragraphs and then we'll start your your, your hearing and then we'll have you join us in just a few minutes. So stay tuned.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four is conditional use permit number three-two-zero. Request to allow existing two thousand square foot restaurant located at two-four-two-one-eight Crenshaw Boulevard in the light manufacturing commercial zone. And to sell beer and wine for onsite consumption on the premises. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA, and this item has been continued from the October tenth, twenty twenty-two planning commission. As I mentioned, the applicant is Mr. Steve Kim. The presentation will be done by associate planner Laura McMoran. And I would now turn it over to Laura.
Hey. All of a sudden, none of everyone can see it. So, thank you so much, Chair Camerata. As mentioned, this is a project to allow beer and wine at a restaurant for onsite consumption. The general plan has designated this area commercial and the zoning for this area is light industrial manufacturing. A restaurant serving beer and wine is allowed with a C U P. The site's approximately fourteen thousand square feet and the commercial center was developed around the nineteen-sixties. There are two primary driveways on Crenshaw Boulevard. Forty-seven shared parking stalls are in front of the commercial center. There is a trash area, but it is presently lacking in enclosure and for the rest, this restaurant use. We're adding the condition that they update their trash enclosure. The restaurant itself is a little over nineteen hundred square feet. It has a full kitchen and there are forty-five seats. The restaurant, the applicant is proposing hours for alcohol service from eleven A M. to A M. Sunday through Saturday. Staff is diverging a little from this. And we are asking for recommending hours from eleven A M. to nine P M. Sunday through Thursday. And eleven A M. to ten P M. Friday and Saturday. This is more consistent with other light restaurants in Lomita. Who's, actually, these are their operating hours and they, none of them go past ten P M. on Friday and Saturday. So we feel like it aligns better with our community. This is a floor plan for the restaurant. And you can see it has bar seating, two tops and four tops. They have a full kitchen. They have alcohol storage in the back, but they do, they have a cooler out, which the applicant explained will be accessed by staff. So we have kind of put together a baseline for the crime statistics for this reporting district. And it's more, there's nothing extremely worrisome here, but it's just to be noted. The sheriff's representatives were not concerned with operating, or I should say, alcohol service around meal times. They thought that was suitable. And last year, the shopping center only had one call for service. With the other applications for beer and wine, we have recommended security cameras on the exterior as a condition of approval. And so the findings for the C U P. And as noted, the restaurant serving beer and wine is allowed in the zone with a C U P. The project is consistent with the general plan. The site and building design are oriented towards Crenshaw Boulevard. And a restaurant serving beer and wine is compatible with the current land uses and future land uses. We see the shopping center or something like this on the site for some time. And then the site can accommodate the necessary development features. So when there is a use that is proposing to serve alcohol and it's within three hundred feet of sensitive uses. And we have considered those uses to be schools, houses of worship, and traditionally residential uses, even though it's not specified in the code, we do need to make sensitive use findings. So the two uses that are within three hundred foot radius are first the use behind it, which is the Nishi Yamamoto School on Lomita Boulevard. And then also there's condominium building at two-four-two-eighteen Crenshaw. Now, the contact with these uses is very minimal, if any, at best, because of the orientation of this restaurant to Crenshaw Boulevard. We don't see that there'll be any conflict or any any impact on their sensitive nature. If a beer and wine C U P was granted for this restaurant. So the findings for that are the onsite consumption of beer and wine at a restaurant around mealtime should not affect public safety. That, of course, restaurants bring vitality to an area. And a restaurant serving beer and wine was previously at the shopping center without any complaints from the neighboring uses. So staff is recommending that the planning commission adopts a robust solution of proving beer and wine service on Sunday through Thursdays from eleven A M. To nine P M. And on Fridays and Saturdays from eleven A M. to ten P M. And, and also finds that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Laura, for your presentation. So sorry, questions from commissioners. We'll start from top to bottom. Commissioner Graff?
Yeah, the current, is it a business currently in operation?
I think we can ask the applicant. I've seen some signs of life there over the past few months, but when I've gone by there, it's been closed.
Just as a note, it was closed today.
Was it? Okay.
Oh, we got this, Mr.
Can I ask him? I can ask him, can I? Mr. Kim, is the restaurant currently in operation?
Let me just clarify that when we opened the restaurant a few months ago, we were in operation. As part of my presentation, I was going to share with you that we have about seven locations throughout Southern California. This is our, we're very proud to say this is our seventh location of Katsu Bar. Currently, as of today, it's currently closed. We're simply waiting for the beer and wine to be issued with your approval and A B C's concurrence in the very near future. So to answer your question, we're closed right now until the beer and wine is approved.
Okay, and your hours of operation are going to be Sunday through Thursday, eleven to nine, and Friday and Saturday from eleven to ten?
No, Mr. Commissioner, what, if I may get into the hours of operation request. The, the hours of operation for other six, six locations range anywhere from eleven P M. closure to two A M. The most recent restaurant that opened in Koreatown, city of Los Angeles, it's been very successful. It's a very vibrant neighborhood, is very popular with the locals and, and the businesses and residents in the area. For this particular location, the city of Lomita, we want to respectfully request for hours of operation to close at twelve midnight, seven days a week. We have invested tremendous amount of capital. We're certainly proud to be part of city of Lomita. What's interesting about our location, number one. It was vacant when we identified this location. So we, we're coming in with lots of investment. And the premise so happens to be located on the borderline of city of Torrance and city of Lomita. As you may be aware, across the street, there's a huge shopping center. There's a Korean restaurant that enjoys hours of operation that goes well late into the evening. We simply want to be competitive with other restaurants in that area. I could certainly appreciate city of Lomita staff recommending the hours, but I think we have to recognize there are residents, not only in city of Lomita, but other, other parts of the city as well, right? The city of Torrance, the Gardena. I've represented many, many restaurants that open well, well into midnight. And I think for this restaurant to be viable and be very successful and have a long-term standing in the community. We would really appreciate midnight closure at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Dever.
Oh, nothing at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Santos?
Good evening. I do have a question. You mentioned there's a restaurant. Other competitor restaurants across the street and crossroads. I know that there are some bars on Crenshaw north of the Pacer Project that those stay up open till two A M. So I hope that we're able to help you out and get your doors open as soon as possible.
Mr. Commissioner, thank you very much. And let me make one thing very clear. I know some of you members have, have drove by the restaurant. I think the restaurant itself is a little misleading. Katsu Bar. It's not a traditional beer and wine alcohol sales establishment. This is a truly a bona fide restaurant that specializes in fusion Korean cuisine with the, you know, specialty burgers and sandwiches and, and curry. So I just want to make that very clear, that our intention is not to sell alcohol primarily. Beer and wine will be incidental to food sales at all times.
Okay, thank you. Let's go back with comments, questions from commissioners. Commissioner Steinbach?
Um, are you asking for comments or questions? I mean, have we gotten all the information from city and?
Any you may have on, on the presentation from Laura so far.
Right, that, no, I have no questions about that.
We'll circle back to Mr. Kim's presentation and then back to the commission again.
Yes, Mr. Chair and the members of the commission, in addition to what my statements, I'd just like to add that you know, the hospitality and restaurant businesses have been, have been going through a tremendous hardship for the past few years, needless to say. My client and, and, and everybody that have participated in this venture started when, when the COVID outbreak a few years back. So it's been, it's been trying times for everybody. Not only for the owners of the franchise, but the the workers at the restaurant. So, you know, we're trying to create jobs, obviously. We're certainly trying to create some tax revenue for the city and state of California. I think allowing us or giving us the privilege to sell till midnight will certainly benefit us and be able to service the, the community at large. I think that's, that's the only way we could be viable to survive in this, in this downy economic times. So I would strongly urge and find it in your heart to help a small entrepreneurs in your city to to thrive in their business. So if you could really give it a serious consideration of affording us the ability to open till midnight, that would be absolutely tremendous for, for our business endeavor. Thank you very much.
Okay, so let me continue and make the comment that we'll just finish off with the commissioners' questions and then you can actually make a presentation. So we've kind of gotten a little out of sorts here, but moving through. So Commissioner Stevens, any comments or questions?
I do have a few, but I want to hear his presentation first.
And then Commissioner Thompson?
No questions of staff.
Okay, so now, Mr. Kim, if you would like to make your presentation, you can, and then we will close your presentation. Close the public hearing and then bring it back to the commission for questions and comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, commissioners. I just like, I like to make it, make it very brief and just add a few presentation. First and foremost, I want to thank the associate planner or the planner, Ms. McMoran for her professionalism. I was not able to attend last month's meeting due to my overseas trip and it got delayed, so it's my fault, but thank you very much for accommodating. And making us a presentation. Let me just talk about Katsu Bar and their endeavor in, in the hospitality business in Southern California. Within a very short period of time, we were able to open seven locations. Actually, this is the seventh location. We're also looking at one in San Diego. We're on an expedited process. Fortunately, our cuisine, our restaurant, and, and the modern character of our restaurant has been very popular in every, every neighborhood that, that we opened up. And we're confident city of Lomita will welcome us with our cuisine and our professional service. The, the Lomita location is very important because these other locations are in sort of as Orange County and, and, and central part of Los Angeles. And we're really trying to move into not only city of Tustin, but Torrance and so on and so forth to Redondo Beach. And we want to be able to have, have the establishment catered to local communities. We're confident, albeit we've had a short period of experience operating the Katsu Bar franchise, but every franchise owners go through a rigorous training. And we keep focus of not only our service to our customers, but keeping it safe. I think public safety and, and, and the community safety is utmost important. Certainly, food is important as well, but we want to be part of your community. We want to be part of your city. And I know that if we have any issues in the future, either Ms. Ms. McMoran or, or anyone from the city of Lomita has, has a direct access to me and I'll be accountable for any issues or problems that may arise. The, the previous owner of the restaurant unfortunately had to, had to close down. And, and we feel very fortunate to be able to be part of city of Lomita and particularly this, this shopping center. And we're confident we will be a model business owner. Will be a good neighbor to the, to the residents in the area. And we certainly look forward to being part of your family in the city of Lomita. I'm available for any questions. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kim, for that.
Mr. Chair. Before you go on to the commissioners' comments and questions, can I ask for a point of clarification from the applicant?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Kim, you indicated that you have six locations that are open. In looking at the website for Katsu Bar, it does show five locations. And at this point, out of the five locations, the latest opening or the latest closing time is nine P M. So can you clarify? Because I believe you indicated some of the locations were open past nine P M., but all of these five locations are closed by nine P M.
That's correct. Our initial, when we rolled out these restaurants two and a half years ago, our intention was to stay open relatively you know, within the reasonable hours, you know, eleven o'clock, seven days a week. However, you know, fortunate for us, the, the restaurants has been very popular and the demand for the restaurants to open in their community has really exploded. So, for instance, Koreatown, in city of Los Angeles, we are submitting an application with city of L A. planning department to open till two A M. seven days a week. Other cities were exploring those options as well. But we want to be known as a restaurant that opens well into late, late hours, well into at least midnight for all of our locations from today on forward for any future locations as well.
But currently at this time, you are closing by nine P M. So you're making applications with those other jurisdictions?
Yes, we are, except for Santa Monica. We were contemplating Santa Monica at this time, but city of Saritows, city of L A., Westminster, Tustin. Yes, we have those application in the pipeline at this time. Thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that clarification, I will now open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any written communications on this item? No? That's a no for those of you that haven't heard her, but she said, no, we did not receive any written communication.
I'm very, I'm very sorry. I could not find my little volume icon. Thank you.
Okay, and the next question, if you have any requests to speak on this item. Or, or if there's anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item. You can come to the podium or use the raise hand feature on your Zoom so that you can speak. So anything from you, Linda? Yes, no? Take ahead. No, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I keep losing the section with the, my mute. No, there's no one else on the, on the call here.
I don't believe there's anybody here in attendance that wishes to speak on the item. So with that, I will close the public hearing and I will bring it back to the commission for any last comments or questions. So I'm going to go down the roll call again one more time and we'll go with vice. So I'm going to go down the roll call again one more time and we'll go with Vice President Graff. Any more comments or questions?
Yeah, I understand the discussion about the hours. Noting the location there and the other businesses, like businesses in Torrance Crossroads, the bar north of the Pacerne Project, I still use Pacerne Project, I'm sorry. And the opening of the Pacerne Project. I think, in my opinion, I think midnight is not too far of a reach. It's only an hour later. On the Friday and Saturday nights, it's only an hour later. There haven't been many problems from a law enforcement standpoint in the area. So that's my opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Dever?
Yeah, that barbecue place across the street stays open until 11:30 on the weekends and 10:30 during the week. And, you know, we're trying to be vitalized, Lomita, and not make it a sleepy town by closing everything down so early. When I was in college, which is so many years ago, we drove through Elsa Gundo Main Street. It was nine o'clock. It was shut down. We thought, what happened, everybody? You know, with the... So we don't want this here. And with concern being inhabited and people maybe walking around, this is what we need. And I think this is where you're going to compete with the crossroads? Why close down until people go across the street? It's not fair to these, you know, these people that are trying to open a business. So I think midnight is just fine and if we have no issues in our shopping center and if we can get people to walk around more, that would be a good thing. So they're not necessarily getting in their car, but I don't foresee that as being a problem. But I think midnight is great. I believe you.
Okay, Commissioner Santos?
Thank you. I agree with midnight, the closing time. We are the friendly city after all. So anybody that wants to come in that neck of the, for that part of town, they're more than welcome.
Okay, Commissioner Steinbach?
Thank you. And Linda, I'm on your side. I, my Zoom is messing up and those controls keep dropping too. But I just read there's an update for it, so I got to do that. So anyway, I'm going to piggyback. I agree. I think first we need to be considering whether we're going to allow alcohol sales. And then the 12 o'clock thing. And that part of it's all fine and good. The part I have a little bit of issue with and more, it's more of a presentation issue than it is whether I agree with the project or not, is that this was, this was titled and justified as a restaurant serving alcohol. And that, because that's what staff was told. And what I'm gathering from all this is without the alcohol, this place may not survive. We're being told that they delayed the opening because they want to find out where they're going to get the alcohol. We're being surprised then with the nine or 12 o'clock issue. And it's a restaurant. It's a bona fide restaurant. Well, I'm sorry, nobody eats dinner at 10 o'clock unless you're in Spain. So, you know, primarily after nine o'clock, from nine to midnight, it's going to be all alcohol and some bar food. And I'm not predicting that. I'm not, I don't have any information on that. I just, I'm really concerned that it was presented to us as this is an ancillary use is the alcohol and it's called, you know, the Katsu Bar. So I don't know if it walks like a duck, I guess. With that being said, I am more likely to approve it for all the reasons that were stated because I do agree with the fact that it's all going along across the street and the sheriff doesn't seem to be too concerned. But I would caution the applicant in the future that you need to paint a better picture of what this is going to be and not something that you think that we're going to approve because of what it's called. That's all my comment.
Thank you, Bob. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, Commissioner Steinbach kind of said what I was going to say. The applicant made a comment earlier that they were delaying the opening and they weren't going to open if they didn't get the beer and wine license. And I know that site in the previous has always had a restaurant or a bar in there. They had, I think, french fries that they throw out every once in a while. And I know, you know, Jen opens and closes 11:30 on the weekends. I don't have a problem per se with the 12. And it's beer and wine. I know that the bar in Torrance, just north of Lomita Boulevard, they have their own special issues. And there's always trouble there, but that's strictly a bar. So, yeah, I kind of agree. The way it was presented, you know, and we're getting it is we're not going to open if you don't approve the beer and wine. But I'm all for bringing businesses into Lomita. I mean, that's what we've been trying to do for a long time. So that's my all language.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, a couple of issues in the presentation by the applicant concerning, one, either the mistake or misspeaking as to the hours of operation into late, well into late into the evening as to the other ones, other restaurants in other jurisdictions. And then the correction of that, okay. And then concern as expressed by Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Steinbach, I share that concern about delay in opening pending this and the alcohol, you know, alcohol approval. And whether it's a viable, as Commissioner Steinbach said, point well taken, whether the restaurant is viable as a restaurant and whether it can survive without the beer and alcohol. That's a concern to me. With that being said, I could ask, it appears to be the main issue is the hours of operation. I'd like to ask Associate Planner McMoran, McMoran rather, how many other restaurants that serve beer and wine in our city are open beyond 11 o'clock, either on the weekdays or weekends?
I know for a fact Blackhorn is open. We authorized them to be open. They have until 2:00 AM. There have been some calls into code enforcement when patrons leave at that late hour. And then O'Hearn's, but that wasn't something this commission approved. Off the top of my head, all the CUPs we've entitled and the operating we've reviewed. I can't think of one and someone, please correct me, that is going as late, except for those two.
What about Yale House?
How did you say that?
They may be, but they weren't under, I don't think they.
They do not have a conditional use.
Yeah, see.
Yeah, many of the locations are actually considered to be legal law enforming, so you don't have conditions that help regulate the use. The exceptions would be Blackhorn. And Blackhorn was actually given a full license, so they're able to serve all alcohol, not just beer and wine. And just in review of that resolution, it does not contain very good conditions of approval. And so there have been some issues associated with behavior and other operational standards. So one thing that the commission can consider is that certainly you want to provide an economic development opportunity, having restaurants that thrive and provide good vitality for the rest of the neighborhood is a good thing. As I think is evidenced by Katsu, their other locations are currently not operating past 9:00 PM, but they have an intent to make applications to those other jurisdictions. I'm guessing that all those jurisdictions are requiring a conditional use permit. However, sometimes in bona fide restaurants, they don't necessarily always require a CUP because they already have conditions in which they operate. But one thing you can consider is modifying condition number 13, which does provide for the hours of operation. You do not, however, need to go completely to midnight if you want to meet in the middle. You know, you can do 10 o'clock from Mondays through, or Sundays through Thursdays and maybe 11 o'clock for Saturdays and Sundays. With conditional use permits, once you have them approved, it's very difficult to go back and to change things. Right? So if you have issues with the operations, you can use code enforcement, but your conditional use, generally if you organize it and you condition it properly, hopefully you'll never have a problem. But once you establish it, you know, they can always come back and ask for something later to expand it. So my suggestion would be to start out a little bit more conservative and allow the applicant to come back for more later. So whether or not you maintain the condition as currently proposed, which staff would still recommend, or if you want to modify it, maybe just modifying it by one hour.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification and that suggestion. That was in the back of my mind to start with. Also, I agree with the staff's presentation as to the orientation of the restaurant and its impact on the school that's right behind it and the residential area that's down a little bit on Crunch Up Boulevard. I think the impact of operation and sale of beer and wine would be minimal or negligible at best. So that's certainly in favor of the application and request for extended hours. That's all I have to say at this point, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Because I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Is part of this that during the times that serves the alcohol, they must be serving food?
Their kitchen must remain open, but it is not that it's the likelihood of people eating food at, after supper time or so late into the evening. They could still be serving the alcohol with their kitchen open and operational and people don't have to order a meal in order to order a beverage. So it's kind of the, I think someone said, looks like a duck, quacks like a duck. It's like we have two components here. We have, you know, a normal restaurant operation. And this is kind of a fast casual restaurant versus like a, across the street Jen barbecue, which you classify as like a casual restaurant where, or like Kotage or Sushi Delight, where you have waitstaff coming to you. This is more fast casual. And, you know, they have soda fountain that's self-serve and you go to the cashier to order. It's, it is a restaurant. It does serve, you know, meals, but it's like one of these more, you know, these quicker places that you go to. Not for socialization and slow conversation. It's a little, if I understand the flavor of it, it's kind of like, it has the same floor plan as Burger I Am does, or did.
I think just to add to that too, though, one thing to remember too, is that while the applicant intends to sell food with every alcoholic beverage, that doesn't mean that you can't finish your meal and still stay there for an hour or two, still drinking beer and wine. Right? So and I think that's sometimes the intent of the later hours, it's to allow for the lingering so that people are still ordering things, but not necessarily directly food.
Excuse me, is this, is it your understanding where that they, that to order food, they have waitstaff to take orders or you go up and order it from a counter?
It's from a counter if I understand the floor plans correctly. Emma, Steve?
No, this, let me just make a clarification. State of California Alcoholics Beverage Control, we have license pending with them and it's for type 41, beer and wine on-premise license request. And that particular license requires us, mandates us to sell food, excuse me, beer and wine incidental to the food sales. In other words, it cannot, the sale of beer and wine gross sales cannot be more than the food sales. That's certainly not going to be the case. We simply want to have the patrons enjoy their meal along with glass of wine or beer. You know, what's very popular in Asian cuisine throughout the world is a fried chicken. Fried chicken and beer. They call it, I think they have a chicken mac. I speak a little bit of Korean, but you know, the K-pop sensation has really catapulted the sales of fried chicken along with beer, which is very popular in Asia, all over, all over the, all over the world. So, you know, our concept came from that popularity. We have no intention of selling beer and wine to the patrons, you know, to our customers. That's not our intention. We take a lot of pride in our food, our cuisine. That's what people really enjoy. But certainly beer and wine is incidental, but it's very important to our modern character of our business plan. So I just want to make that very clear.
So I guess there's no lingering. If you start to linger, you have to order food, right?
When you order food, the food will be served by a server to the table. This is not a, I think you alluded to other burger, burger joint where you go to the counter, you order food and you pick up food and alcohol and you go to table. You get seated, the waiter or waitress comes to you, or, you know, just like a traditional bona fide restaurant. That's what we are.
Did I, did I understand him correctly that since under title 41, the price of the food has to be greater than the price of the alcohol?
He was not saying price. This just has to do with what is the majority of the sales in the restaurants. And so the applicant is correct, or applicant's representative is correct, that a type 41 is for a restaurant, a bona fide restaurant. And so at least 50% plus have to be on food sales. Otherwise, they get classified more as a bar or a cocktail lounge. And so, you know, we recognize that it's very important, the profit of a restaurant is very thin. And so the beer and wine tends to be an important element. We absolutely think they should have a beer and wine license. Now, the only question really is, how long should they be operating? And it's just a recognition that in the later evening, people have tended to finish their meals, but they may still be lingering and still drinking, which is fine, as long as they're not driving drunk, right? So I think the question before the commission is, one, do you want to support the ABC license as a type 41? And secondly, given the location and the surrounding area, is it appropriate to have the hours of operation as recommended by staff? Or would you like to modify those hours? The applicant is requesting, I think initially up to 2:00 AM, which in our opinion, based on other restaurants in and around the area, is not consistent with a restaurant. So the staff would again ask the planning commission's consideration of what hours you think would be appropriate.
The applicant did indicate midnight in lieu of 2:00 AM.
Yes.
Everybody has read through the analysis on page four, it clearly defines what, actually, if you start on the bottom of page three, it clearly defines the types of licenses and then it goes into the hours of the proposed bar and the other two locations closely related to that. So I guess at this point, if there's no more comments or questions from any of the commissioners, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to make a motion that the City of Lomita Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit 320, adopting the findings and the sensitive use findings set forth in the report by staff, also finding that the request of the, it is a category exempt from sequin and adopting the hours of 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM Friday and Saturday. My proposal.
Hey, Commissioner Thompson? The motion second was by Mr. Steinbach?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, is there any further discussion? If not, I would ask Madam Clerk to do a roll call on that motion.
I I I want a clarification.
Okay.
So uh clarification would be under. Condition thirteen.
Thirteen, yes.
Condition thirteen would be eleven AM to eleven PM. Uh, Sunday through Thursday and eleven AM till twelve. Eight AM.
Um, Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday. Is that correct?
Yes. And uh, without prejudice, the applicant will be applying if he. They think they need a later date at some time in the future, but I think that's this is a really good accommodation.
Okay.
How many are the friendly city?
Okay, there is a motion and a second to uh accept and approve. The conditional use permit number three twenty with the uh revision that goes in uh. Uh, item number thirteen of the uh resolutions reflect eleven AM to eleven PM Sunday through Thursday and eleven AM to twelve midnight Friday and Saturday. If that is correct, then we have a motion and a second. Then Madam Clerk, can you please call the vote? Actually, before we do that, I have one other small correction that has not been noted. Um, I'm not sure if it's uh. Laura that does this for Linda um on page uh special conditions on page uh six. Item number seventeen references people six five P V Boulevard as an address. I think that was from the last one, so I'm not going to go through the whole security camera thing again. We're done with that from the last one. I just wanted to bring out everybody's attention.
They don't have to install them.
No, I I just want to make sure we're good on just the address on this one. Uh, but with that being said, um. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on this?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner um Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson? Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Yes.
All right. That's approved seven zero.
Okay.
Mr. Kim, thank you for your attendance. Uh, staff will be in touch with you uh from this point forward.
Thank you. I I was muted. Thank you very much. Thank you for your.
Okay, you very much. All right. Okay. Uh, let's move on to uh next item, public hearing number five. Which is a discussion and consideration of the zone text amendment. Number twenty twenty-two dash oh two. Which will be an amendment to the existing La Mida Municipal City Code Section eleven point one dot two seven. Dot one, two, to modify sign regulations of the twenty-four thousand Crenshaw Boulevard specific plan. Located at two, four, five, three La Mida Boulevard. Uh, the zone text amendment is uh to modify sign regulations within that certain section. And the amendment is initiated by the concern group, and I believe the applicant is here and. There's three individuals, so I'm not sure who's going to make the first presentation. Uh, but after we. Get our presentation from staff, then we'll go from there. So um. I believe Laura, uh, you're up as well, if you would give us that presentation, please.
Okay, so. There's been a request to um add one wall sign to the easterly elevation and to increase the sign uh size of. The real estate signs. This is a zone text amendment because the specific plan is in our municipal code Sony. Section, and so we're. This forward. So the general plan designation, it's consistent with this high density residential. This is a residential. Um, project if for those who may not be aware, there's a two hundred and. Twenty unit five square apartment building located on the site and it has two frontages. There are three existing um building identification wall signs and one monument sign. So this site plan, the green dots represent the three um wall building identification wall sign. The green star represents the location of the proposed wall sign. And the red arrow and red bubble represents where the leasing sign will be located. So this is a section of the code. I'm not going to read it that we are mending and we are um. Recommending that the commission recommend. Um, four wall signs. This will be on the easterly elevation. It will be illuminated. It'll be identical to the others in size. It's about thirty-four square feet. And um, that's an evening shot of the northerly elevation to show of that look at night. The real estate um sign is already in the code, except the area is uh twelve square feet. And the applicant was proposing fifteen square feet and have it uh. On both sides and staff supports this. It'll be a little easier for visibility. The Crenshaw Boulevard is multiple lanes, and so they'll let people know where they can turn. The leasing garage on Crenshaw Boulevard is recessed. Where the Raj access is recessed, so. That's for this line. So any zone text amendment needs to find consistency with the general plan. We need to demonstrate the relationship. And. In this instance, we find that. The golden land use element one, the zone text amendment is again consistent. Promotes an orderly pattern of development in the city. And then um something a little new with our new certified housing element, we have a new policy. To support modifications to ordinances to address a variety of housing types. The really this one is a unique. Project, and I'm going to let Sherry speak to this new um policy in our certified housing element.
Thank you, Laura. Well, first off, I just wanted to congratulate the City of La Mida for having a certified housing element. We got our certification behind it. Without um some heart wrenching at the end, talking about what they wanted, but on October fourteenth, we got our approval. October fifteenth was the deadline, so. Just by the one day.
Yeah, but there's a whole bunch of them still in.
Oh, there are a lot of cities that have not yet been certified. So I mean, it does show a lot of credibility for the City of La Mida because you've taken the the housing requirements from the state very seriously. Modified them in a way that meets your local needs. But to Laura's point, you know, we are looking to have a variety of housing that serves the community, not just today, but also in the future. The CERN is obviously one of our future type projects because it's much bigger than we've normally seen within La Mida. But I just wanted to point out just just one thing to keep in mind as you're considering this project. You know, Passard is a a much larger building and it certainly needs to have visibility so people can see and understand that it is a larger apartment building with leasing opportunities. We do expect similar types of buildings to be located along La Mida Boulevard. Um, when this commission and the council cert approve the housing element. One of the programs was to look at that eastern portion of La Mida Boulevard for a specific plan. And primarily to look at a mixed use opportunity that would provide greater density. So what is currently a twenty-two units per acre, you brought that minimum up to thirty units per acre. But then with a specific goal of providing for inclusionary housing and incentives so that we could. Assemble properties to create larger development sites that would then support. Projects that would be almost as big as the CERN. I don't think you'll get quite up to eighty-eight units per acre. That's a pretty big property compared to everything else that's left over. But I do think that you'll be between forty-five to sixty-five units per acre. Once you include the inclusionary housing, um, you almost automatically get a fifty percent bonus of that thirty units becomes forty-five. And then hopefully through assembling. Uh, and having projects that bring community benefits, you'll get up to about that sixty-five units per acre. So if you can imagine as you're driving westerly on La Mida Boulevard, Passard is a five-story project, so having this extra sign at the top. You'll still be able to see it. The other developments, well, most likely will be three and four stories, so you'll have a little bit of a stair step approach. But we believe that um the application that's pending before you is appropriate, not only for the con- context and location. But also for the future development along La Mida Boulevard. It'll start making sense as you start having some more of that development. But I would think with the specific plan, uh, you know, Brianna and I had just for a brief opportunity to talk about it. Uh, but this is something that will most likely come to you after the beginning of the year. Where the city will start an RFP process to hire a consultant. And then I'll ultimately start scoping what you want within that specific plan area. And that is kind of a stepping stone as well to what you'll be doing with your general plan. Because you may find the success of La Mida Boulevard may apply to other areas of the city, specifically Pacific Coast Highway. Right? So just trying to make sure that your your blinders are off and that you're looking ahead. That's all I have.
Okay, so um, let me bring it back. So uh, thank you, Laura, for the presentation. And thank you again, Sherry, for your comments and. Uh, what I'd like to do is bring it to the commission. So we'll start off with Vice Chair Graff, if you have any comments or questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Um. I'm trying to recall, and if I recall correctly. We gave Passard an exclusion for additional signs. Back when above and beyond what was allowed. We did, we did, and now they're coming back and asking for more again. Why wasn't this asked for in the beginning? Because it probably would have been shot down if it was all done together. Because it was, would have, the magnitude would have been much, much greater. I'm not saying against it. I'm just saying. The logistics just don't sit right with me. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dever?
Nothing.
Commissioner Santos?
Uh, no comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Steinbach?
No, thank you.
And Commissioner Stevens? And Commissioner Thompson?
One question of staff, and I'm not sure if they can answer. I think they can. There's already the signage up on Crenshaw Boulevard facing west. This is, this proposed one is to put a sign of facing eastward on the east side of the building. In other words, as you're driving west on La Mida Boulevard toward Torn's, the sign will be at the upper left-hand corner of the building. Is that correct? Is I looking at it?
Yes, yes.
What is the difference between this particular, the size of this sign? Uh, which would be facing east and the westerly facing sign that's already in existence? Is there any difference in the size, height, style?
Um, the sign, the sign is about thirty-four square feet and that is consistent with the other signs who are identical. Um, they, I should note that um. Passard's building identification signs, the monument sign and three wall signs and this proposed sign are all within their allotted signing area.
That's my only question. Staff, excuse me.
Current. A lot of area. We gave an exclusion and gave them additional area. In another presentation.
Laura, I think he's referring to the specific plan amendment that was processed earlier. Cause you have the original specific plan, which right, which provided for a very specific um amount and location of signs. And then the applicant came back asking for some revisions and then this is a second revision.
That is correct.
Well, I know we revised the leasing sign, right, to make that one bigger. The banner that's there, which is not a permanent sign.
Yeah, so the first, when this specific plan was adopted, it referenced our sign code section sixty-six. And that really was for much smaller apartment buildings. We have nothing like this, right? So. Passard, uh, you know, has such a unique, different look, feel, scale, that the signage in there was.
You were telling us that.
It it, yeah, it it was, it was.
I I I understand what you're saying, and we all agreed to it. All I'm saying is this is the second time they have come back for a revision and they're making, adding more. Now than what we approved more on before. That's all.
I understand what your comments are. Thank you.
Okay, I had just one com- a question and um it's referencing your analysis that the. Uh, oversized banner that's up there now is only good for a year. Uh, from the certificate occupancy. Do you have that date for the COO?
Oh, I would, darn it.
Ask them when they make their presentation.
Wait, yes, you can. I can tell you it's October something.
Okay, well, then I'll ask them when they make their presentation. Okay, so with that being said, um. If the applicant is present, which they are, there's three individuals, um. Uh, I would like to uh at least have one of you come up to the podium and speak, or you can speak from the chair, whichever more, which is more comfortable. Just state your name and address for the record so that then they can record that, please.
Uh, good evening, commissioners. Very good to see you. Uh, I'm Greg Yonk. Most of you know me, um. So, uh, and Whitney is Cam Suron. He's uh one of our senior leaders of our development group. This was project that he had a big hand in building, so he spent good amount of time. Uh. So, um. Uh. Uh, Commissioner Graff, I I understand your question. If, and uh, when we were faced with this. Issue during the pandemic with with your former uh community development director, he was. We were given kind of a box to kind of fit within. And how far can we stretch from that, that? Set of of what we thought were kind of obsolete. Uh, rules for for signage for much smaller apartment project. And uh, you know, in hindsight. We knew that this was an issue that we wouldn't have signage. Uh, heading west on La Mida. And in retrospect, we, and now that we, you know. Uh, started operations and, you know, we believe the signs are tasteful. And nicely, uh, we, we thought, wow, this was a mistake. Uh, yeah. So that's why you see us here today. Thank you.
That's your presentation?
Yeah, we're, you know, we're, we think it's uh, you know, pretty clear cut what we're asked.
Okay, so.
Certain questions.
Uh, I do have that. The question is, do you have that date for the COO?
I believe it was at the end of September, I thought.
Maybe.
There was nine thirty.
You have a specific.
Nine thirty, I believe, was on the COO. CCO.
The point. Chair Camerata, the reason I noted that in there is so that myself or other staff will, we're very well aware of the conditions on that big banner.
I was just asking because it was in here and I was reading. I just wanted to know if they, what the date was, that's all.
And that big banner is quite a bit smaller than what was allowed to. I would say quite a bit. It's smaller than.
I think it's about what that was going to be, yeah.
I thought it was going to be longer. I'm, never mind, it doesn't matter.
Oh, good size. Still a good size.
So I guess the question is, the question I have, and it sounds to me like Mike's going to hit the nail on the head, all the planning that went into this, your signage doesn't seem to be attracting what you think is. Enough people or is the signage extra because of?
Well, I I will give you an update, so um. So, you know, we, well, one, we we started leasing a little over a month ago. And uh, it's doing well. It is doing well. And and there are. You know, there are so many employers within a three-mile radius. Um, we are capturing a good amount of them, so we're, we are happy with that.
Yeah, so out of the two twenty, how many do you have leased already?
We have uh about sixty.
Oh, that's good.
Which is, which is very strong. Uh. And uh. And then, you know. There is what we refer to as phase two of the project. It's the units that line the uh gas station.
Okay.
Um, those are not ready to be leased. Uh, they're they're getting closed. We still have some appliances.
Those are the the highways or the woods with a good view of Ballast Gardens, right?
Correct. Yes, um. So. We're doing well.
Good.
We're, we're, we are happy and, you know, we do have a. Uh. Uh, plan to have a. City event in early January, so that you all can see the finished product. Uh, not the, the uh. Half-complete project that you saw several months ago.
Okay, was still very interesting, though, and very impressive then.
Yes.
Lot of hiking around to do, but.
We hope you'll be impressed.
Okay. Well, if you have nothing further, I would um. Uh, I guess open up the public hearing at this point. Uh, and seeing that we didn't have anybody on the uh. Floor here for questions. Uh, Madam City Clerk, do we have any comments or questions from anybody that submitted?
I did not receive any. Thank you.
Okay. Um. So with that. I guess what we can do is we can close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the commission. Does the commission, any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant? I'll start off with, again, Commissioner Vice Chair Graff.
No.
And Commissioner Dever.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Santos?
Uh no, Mr. Chairman, I don't.
Mr. Steinbach?
Uh no, I have no questions. I I think what's proposed is great.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens?
I don't have any questions. I'm just glad the project is finished and you made a monument sign at that leasing driveway. Cause we should drive it down Crenshaw. You you don't know where to turn.
I bet you're gonna say you couldn't find it.
Yeah, I missed the whole project.
And again, a bigger project. All right, Commissioner Thompson.
Yeah, no, no question. Just a a comment to the to the applicant. When you when you originally applied to uh this commission for approval of the entire project. One of the things that impressed me was that you're not gonna, that you were gonna remain an owner of 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 the property, not, you know, buy them and sell them off into somebody else. And you have been true to your word on that. Another thing that you represented, it would be hoped would be true, but it's, you know, it's just a statement at the time that you would be a good neighbor and be participating. And be active within the community. And from what I've seen since that time, you have. So I commend you, one for your, one of your success, we always, I'll I'll want you to be successful. To the location is is just right for this size of an unusual and unique project uh to our city. But more importantly, you you've been true to your word as far as, you know, and and. And a resident owner of of a business in La Mita and have also been a very active in the community. We've seen several, several, you know. Uh charitable projects that you've been involved with, and I want to thank you personally for that. I think that's that shows, you know, character of the business and being true to your word. And more importantly, being involved and being part, becoming part rapidly of our community in a very, very beneficial way, not just providing very nice housing and and a nice looking building, et cetera. Which, okay, that's that's your business, but you've also gone a step beyond and become a very good, from what I see, a very good. Res- a resident and uh of our city and being involved in certainly the charitable projects I would recommend or like praying for that and strongly urge you to continue that. Uh charitable part, although a lot of businesses don't do that. Many, many do, and yours is certainly part of that. I've seen your name in several. Several projects, several charitable organizations to help support in the city, and that's good neighbor, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Okay, um if there is no further questions. Uh I would ask for a motion.
I'll move, I'll move.
Oh.
That's really. That we approve, the the approval of the resolution, the zone text amendment twenty two, twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty two dash oh two. Amending the municipal code section eleven. Dash one dot twenty seven dot twelve to establish new sign standards with in the twenty two four thousand Crenshaw Boulevard specifically.
Okay, or a second.
I think somebody.
Somebody's trying to tell me, who's, who wants to second it?
I second it. Santos.
I knew somebody was trying to tell me something. Okay, if there's no more uh comments or questions, madam, would you please do a roll call? Linda?
She's looking. Yes, thank you. I, sorry, I keep losing it. I apologize. Um Commissioner Dever?
Yes.
Commissioner Santos?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinbach?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Graff?
Yes.
And Chair Camerata?
Yes.
That's approved then, seven zero.
Okay, so uh Greg and Cam, you will be hearing from either Laura or maybe even Brianna going forward. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Order that signage.
Okay. So let us continue to move forward. We are on scheduled matters and we're on item number six. Which is the uh communication regarding any city council actions, and I'm not sure if Laura's doing this or Sherry or. Or Brianna. Ryan, was that you?
Now he's run away.
Ryan? Okay, well.
Well, we survived the elections because we didn't have to do one in La Mita, so that's a good point.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think there's much to report other than what the advantage has already reported, which is the town to town is under construction, but that's all good things.
Okay, I'll say Ryan's presentation. Good, great. Uh well, the next big item is item number seven. Oh, you're back. Anything else that you'd like to do under uh communication regarding city council actions?
You have city manager Ryan. No, nothing.
You have three minutes.
He's done.
Done. Thank you, sir. Uh project status updates.
We have a few to report on. Uh one is that Target is actually in plan check with LA County Building Safety, so they're making significant process.
Great.
Or progress in process. Uh Laura is working on that project. We're discussing with them um some. Possible modifications dealing with their site plan, just making sure their parking, everything speeding code, uh looking at their signage, but everything looks like they will be well on their schedule by the open next year. So that's a very good thing. Uh we also have a pending application across the street for a bank building. And so we are currently reviewing that for two restaurants. So it's nice to see some productive reuse of that building. It's been a long time.
Yes.
The former bank building that's on the northeast quarter of Narbonne and Pacific First Highway.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the one west.
So this will probably be one of your first applications for a minor conditional use permit to look at parking. And so we want to talk about the details at this point, but just a reminder to the session that we just recently modified the municipal code. To allow for a new process, which is a minor CUP, so that you can specifically look at opportunities for shared parking and reduced parking. And modifying the parking requirements for specific land uses when you can meet certain findings. So this applicant is currently working with the city staff and we expect that will probably come to you probably just after the first of the year.
Probably, it's probably. Certainly in January.
Yeah, that's exactly. Probably January, February. We'll see with the holidays in terms of getting things through. Um also, in terms of your ADU ordinance, um that was recently approved by the city council. And we were mandated by state law to send that up to the housing and community development with the state to see if they wanted to review it and try to pick it apart, which is what they normally do. Uh but they declined to provide any comments at this point, but that doesn't mean that we're out of the books.
Experience, they are very, very, very picky people.
Yes, they are. And there was a recent state law that just changed for ADUs, so we're obligated to amend our code again, so that'll be coming to you sometime after the first year as well. So I pass the baton to Brianna so that she can work on that one. It's not significant changes. It's primarily dealing with the height. And so we have to allow for greater height of ADUs when they're attached to the house and a few other small minor things, but expect that to come back to you. At that point, we will have to send it back to HCD and who knows, second bite of the apple, they might find other things that they now want to comment on. We were hoping they would let us know now if they had any issues, so do it just in one competence of ordinance amendment, but.
Be too easy.
That would be too easy, so that's obviously not going to happen. Right? Um in terms of another ordinance amendment, um you'll remember that we established new standards for planned residential developments. So that allows for a subdivision in more of a clustering of new homes in the A one and R one zone. And we're providing the incentive for greater density, so it's one to four thousand rather than what would be the one to five thousand. We have an application that we expect to be submitted publicly between now and the end of the year. And it looks like it's going to do exactly what the council and planning commission wanted to do, was to maintain that single family feel, but maintain opportunity for better investment and more housing. So expect that to come to you probably sometime by spring next year, maybe sooner. We'll see how quickly they can get their.
And saving on city streets.
Well, yes, because we're not building cul-de-sacs just because we want to have a house with direct street frontage, right?
Right.
Yeah, cause that doesn't really make sense. We don't want to have to pay for those streets if they're really not needed. Uh going back to the housing element, so the city manager has been having discussions with us about doing an update to the planning commission and the city council. Uh because from the time that it was approved by the council, we had to go back and forth a number of times with HCD. They asked for certain changes, the majority of which were very small. They didn't really create any new policy. In fact, they didn't create any significant new policy at all. But they certainly created some changes to your programs and some of the expectations. So we have um suggested putting this on the agenda for the city council on December twentieth. And I believe it might be possible to um just either invite the planning commission to attend in the audience or maybe even have a joint meeting. So we're working out those details, but rather than try to do separate meetings, because it's sometimes hard to ju- put everything onto your calendars. If we can do it all at one time, that gives Brianna and myself a chance to really go through all of the details, so she'll be at the speed. Because she's gonna have a lot of heavy lifting in terms of ordinance amendments to bring back to the commission and the council. So we'll be talking about not only the changes that occurred in the housing element, but also those programs and the schedule for implementation. Um because some of the things need to happen as of the beginning of next year. So you'll probably see some ordinance amendments getting started fairly soon, but they will all start layering on top of one another as we continue through the housing element. But I encourage you, we'll be um placing the new housing element on the website, so probably by next week it should be uploaded. Remind me JP to get everything to you so we can do that. Um but please start looking at it so that you will become more familiar with some of the programs and scheduling. And I think that's the majority of things. Was there anything else, Laura, that you wanted to mention?
Um the mixed use projects south of Kiwanis, some of their plans for plan check and they've gone through grading. So they're a little bit forward as well.
And that's our first density bonus project, so it'll be a little bit higher density than we normally see, but frankly, you won't really be able to tell. Cause it's primarily one and two bedroom units. And this is something Laura and I have talked about a lot too, that when we're talking about how things look. To some extent, it's really the building envelope, so we shouldn't get scared about the size of the building, but we should definitely pay attention to the number of units and the size of the units. Cause Narbonne's really not a family street per se, so having the one and two bedroom units is probably going to be more consistent with what's appropriate for that street. So it should be a good addition.
Mr. Chair, if I might, just adding to the housing element conversation, you all have asked in the past about what we're doing, pushback on the state on some of these things that have come down and and some of the housing elements requirements. I will um give some kudos to Elizabeth from Dudeck, our consultant, and to Sherry. Um up until the last moment of approval, we were literally on the phone with the state pushing back on some of the things that they were requesting back. Some of them, we flat out said, no, that's not what happened. So you should know there, when we present that back out to you, there are things that were being requested that really beyond what we're bringing back. So uh from staff's perspective, we are pushing back on those things. We'll also be having some conversations with the council at least about uh expressing concerns, not necessarily with. Um Rena in and of itself, not necessarily with the housing element in and of itself, but with the process it took to get there. And we're not the only city having this conversation that it felt adversarial with the state. That I I mean, that's putting it mildly, to be honest, um instead of a cooperative process. And we think it's important that our legislators understand that, so we're having some conversations with the council about how to do that. And we've already had that conversation with some of the person around the city as well.
Has there been any further discussion that you can share about the, from what we've heard? On what we heard about the bring in numbers being way out of whack, or what realistic is realistic?
Uh no, is the quick answer to the question. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about it. Do I realistically seeing any changes from it? Uh and I can say that both for the SCAG region and there are other regions of the state that are going to be starting up their housing process as soon as. State's done with our region, they're gonna move right on to the next one and they're gonna consider us done. I'm happy to hear you all talking in the way you are and starting to think through, and I think Cher's done a great job of sort of expanding our vision a little bit. Thinking about these projects from a larger scale, not necessarily larger project, but from a larger, a bigger picture. To say, when you're looking at a project, how is it fitting into the community today? How's it gonna fit the community fifty years from now? Well, because to be honest, Sherry will look different.
Sherry has been very, very good as far as explanation. And giving us the pros and cons, what we will be able to do, what we won't be able to do. An explanation for uh. From the the requirements as far as parking and so on. And so we may not like it, but we're gonna have to live with it. There's nothing we can do about it, but it, you know, Sherry's been very good in taking this and guiding us through that. She has to be. Definitely appreciate it.
Just remind them up there in a second. It's a two way street. Gotta tell them, and that's what Ryan just delivered to. There's things that you put your foot down and said, no. And that's what they have to hear from every city, because you can't let them keep shoving it down our throats, and that's what's happened. And you've done a great job at pushing back, and I think that's, that's all we need to know, is that you're doing that on everyone's behalf, so that's great.
Yeah, we've certainly tried as much as we can, but you know, I think as Ryan, as the city manager indicated, you know, it's a, it's a kind of a tough love situation because there's so many more. I guess requirements as well as consequences that cities do not comply.
Right.
And that was the problem this time, is that the state, the legislature itself has put together this series of punitive damages. You know, if we don't do the right thing in their eyes. And so I think there's still about a hundred cities in the SCAG region that do not have a certified housing owner. Does that mean the state is going to start taking them through the court system and finding them ten thousand dollars a day? We don't know, but ultimately they could, right? So the changes that we ultimately agreed to were not all the changes that were being asked of us, you know, there was negotiation. Um but it is a reminder that as we go forward, you know, you you do have a housing element, which is now your commitment, not only to the community, but to the state in terms of things that you're going to do. So there will still be things you're not gonna like, right? But you know, the staff and the the entire community hopefully will be able to get behind kind of a recipe that will still work.
Oh, and there's gonna be, there's gonna be things that don't happen because there's nobody there to make them happen. I.e. no developer or whatever to do it, and you don't make, you don't meet your requirement, but you have provided the groundwork. So if there is somebody that wants to do it, they have, they have a way to do.
Except roadblocks.
Okay. Uh item number eight, staff item announcements. You got two bullet points here. First, the South Bay Housing Education Forum. Re project.
Right, and like we sent an email to you last month, kind of reminding or letting you know that this was coming. Uh this is something that the South Bay Coog has been working on with the directors, and we are trying to create kind of an educational opportunity so that. You really get to learn more, not only about your local community, but how to, how it works with the the larger kind of context. Um they're expecting this to occur sometime after the first of the year, so look out for some more emails so that you can sign up for it. They're expecting it to be like a ten course session, which is a big commitment of time. Um but you're going to learn a little bit about lots of different things, so if you're able to accommodate your schedule, you know, please try to attend. It's really for elected officials, appointed officials and staff. Because there are so many changes that are occurring. This is one of the few ways of really being able to create that dialogue in case and to be alert.
And then the second bullet, AB two four four nine teleconferencing, I believe Ryan updated us on that, so.
We'll keep you all updated as we.
Great. Uh nine, planning commissioner items. We'll start off with Vice Chair Graff, anything?
Nope.
Okay. About Commissioner Dever?
No.
Okay, about Commissioner Santos?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, Commissioner Steinbach? Bob, you still there?
Can't find that mute button.
Okay, we'll come back in a second. Commissioner Stevens?
No, I just have a question. The restaurant that's going in next to the Trophy Shop Bananas, what is that called again?
Um I don't know.
Slip bar. The slip bar is their name.
Slip.
Slip.
Like a boat slip.
Okay. But he keeps asking me about, I don't know, some kind of bar.
Yeah, we have recently, and they actually haven't given us any, any other name, so that's still the name they're using.
You can just say the old time restaurant.
You know, that one down there.
Yeah, so, okay. Other than that, I have nothing.
Commissioner Thompson, anything?
Yes, a couple of items. First of all, I'd like to welcome our new uh community and I kind of found my director Brianna Ringe.
Thank you.
Welcome. I'm I'm pleased that you decided to join our city and head up this department. Uh I'd like to ask Sherry, how long is this transition gonna go on? For nothing really matters, but I'm just curious.
It's probably not gonna take that long. I mean, Brianna's coming with a lot of good experience. So you know, between now and December, you know, we'll be dealing with kind of the housing element update and all of that, so I'm not sure what will happen after that.
So maybe.
This may be my last meeting with you.
Oh, okay.
Wow, that was my concern.
Out the door. My job is done.
Uh second issue that's uh real important to me, I I have to regretfully announce that I will be resigning to my position as commission on the city of La Mita Planning Commission. Uh I'll be submitting a letter of resignation to uh the mayor and a copy to the city manager and our chairman. There's a few reasons. I want to be real clear. there's a few reasons, I want to be real clear, it has absolutely nothing to do with our wonderful city or anybody associated with our wonderful city. Uh, I am so proud to have served uh, uh, more than a few years on the Public Safety and Traffic Commission and all commissioners there, and a few, more than a few years on this commission. Uh, wherever I go, talking to family, friends, travel, uh, you know, people ask where you're from, and I said, well, it's it's the smallest town called Lomita, it's in Los Angeles area, has a small town atmosphere surrounded by huge metropolitan area, but I brag about how exceedingly well our city is run with our skeleton staff that works tremendously diligently hard and uh, are tremendously overpaid as city council and but realize, I know very seriously that that the vast majority, I'd say ninety-five percent of our city residents uh, don't realize that our mayor and our city council make a whopping three hundred sixty, three hundred eighty dollars a month, not an hour, not a day, not a week, but per month. And the boys go for the past, for ten years, so that it barely covers their gas, uh, and now clearly it doesn't. Um, so for all intents and purposes, the city council has always been, uh, you know, volunteers, and I just take my hat off to them. You, whether it be the the commissions or the city council, you will have disagreements, but I've always had tremendous respect for anybody that devotes a tremendous amount of time, effort, money uh, to essentially volunteer, and especially under commissions, this commission in particular, how incredibly hard we work for absolutely no remuneration. We, you see no compensation, any, matter what's but they got me a lot more time. They 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 told me there wasn't anything, you're getting something. But no, I I I just really am, am, it's an incredibly impressive way to run a city, and I brag about it, and will continue to brag about, you know, our commissioners totally one hundred percent volunteers, and the quality of the commissions that I've had the absolute honor and privilege to serve with, their work ethic, their intelligence, their their different skills they they bring to bear on our commissions. It's just a phenomenal thing, and that coupled with our our very hardworking barebone staff, you look at our city budget, just look at our budget, it's it's wonderful, the amount of relative amount of incredibly small amount of debt our city has, and how well it's run, and I'm just so proud to be a longtime resident of the city and a a business owner in the city. It's a great place to live, and it's a great place to operate a business and own and operate a business. Um, uh, we've done tremendous amount of work, especially with a housing element, and I'm thrilled that it got adopted at long last. I thank Sherry in particular for the, all the work she did. Our past uh, community economic development directors and our incoming one, uh, just so proud of our of, which is the major portion of our city, how well it's run, and Sherry, if this is your last meeting, I know it's gonna be my last meeting, um, thank you for all the work you've done. You've been extremely competent and extremely informed given. You know, you you've really helped us out, helped me out a lot, and I appreciate that. Uh, it's with regret and bittersweet that I I'm gonna resign. I've I've done my time essentially, and uh, my wife wants to do, we're traveling and uh, I need to keep my health up and all that stuff, so with that said, I'll be resigning, but uh, I want to thank my fellow commissioners for your volunteer service and your your character. It's, I'm so proud of you have been a part of this commission.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Glad to hear that, but, you know, wish you well.
Thank you.
Adventures going forward.
We'll miss you.
Well, I'll miss you too. I made ten just, ten minutes just to say hi.
Yeah.
Total fun.
Okay, so uh, with that, we have one last item, actually, commissioners to attend upcoming city council meetings, December sixth and December twentieth, well, twentieth, I think, we're probably all gonna be there.
All leaving.
So that takes that one off the uh, off the calendar, but uh, December sixth, who's able to go?
The December sixth meeting will be our council reorganization meeting. I would, at this point, we will have very little else on the council other than then reorganizing their committee assignment, so we don't intend to have any items at that meeting. But if you'd like to see the council.
Very takes over.
We will be uh, the incoming.
Well, if anybody can go, then go. Okay, thank you, Monica. Uh, and with that, I will uh, say again, welcome to Brianna, and uh, hopefully, uh, you'll fill Cherry's shoes immensely, and uh, you'll fit right in with this group of people we have here that work hard, all the staff, city staff and so forth. Um, so welcome. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Okay. And we'll note adjournment at uh, seven thirty-five. Good evening. Good Thanksgiving holiday.
Good night.